The Board of Commissioners for the month of May 2019. The Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session from 6:45 to 7:00 PM this evening to discuss a number of real estate matters. If you could all please rise and join our Chief of Police in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. By the high status of America, the Republic of which stands on a nation of freedom, individual liberty and justice.
Thank you, Chief. First item on the agenda tonight is the yearly auditor report for 2018 from our auditing firm Barbicane &amp; Thornton. And here this evening to present that report is Steven Kusflakis. Kusflakis.
Yes.
Kusflakis. Kusflakis. Okay.
Steven King.
Say that again. Thank you for being here.
Kusflakis, right?
Yeah, you got it, yep.
There you go. You're doing pretty good there.
All right.
Steve gets it right and Amy gets it wrong.
Yeah.
What kind of world are we living in?
That's because he heard it.
That's right.
All right. As mentioned before, my name is Steve Kusflakis. I'm a partner with Barbicane, Thornton Company, and I oversaw the audit of the township for the year ended December 31st, 2018. And with my company name. Okay, we were out here in February, March conducting the fieldwork. The first report that we completed for the township was the annual audit and financial report, which gets submitted to the DCD by April 1st. Please say that Amy did file that on time. As part of the inclusion of audit, we gave the statements an unmodified opinion. That basically means we felt they're fairly present in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, free of material misstatements. As part of our audit procedures, we do review the township's internal controls in order to plan our audit approach. So during the audit, we did look at the controls over the receipts, payroll, and dispersments to assess our level of risk. And based on that limited review of internal control, we did not come across any items that we consider to be deficiencies in internal controls. Overall, we feel that the controls in place are operating as intended. We expect to finish the report next month in June of 2019. Right now, the holdup is to have for Township Free Library, which gets included with the financials of the township, but that they're audited by another firm and their reporters do that May 15th. So, once we get that, we'll finalize the township's audit report. We also did what's called a single audit, since the township does spend more than $750,000 in federal dollars each year. And that's basically a compliance audit where we review the township's compliance with laws and regulations over the federal program. That report will also be issued in June of 2019. And we gave an unmodified opinion on compliance, which basically means we feel that the township did comply in all material respects with the requirements of the program. The program that we looked at, and it's the township's largest program, is the Community Development Block Grant. This year, the township had total federal dollar spend of about $1.2 million, and that program alone was 95% of the program. Just some results. This shows how your most significant funds stood as of the end of the year, your general fund, your capital projects fund, and your SOAR fund. Basically, all funds had increases from the previous year. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of $20.6 billion. Of that amount, 11.1 is what they call unassigned, which basically means you can use it for any purpose. The remaining of it, remainder of it is either committed per the township's fund balance policy or assigned for certain purposes by management. The capital products fund balance increased from 5.7 to 9.6 from 2017 to 2018. The main reason is that the township had borrowing this past year, 2018 GOB bonds, and some of that was for capital projects that had not been, these funds had not been used yet for that purpose. So that's why there was an increase in that fund balance. Okay. Trends. This past year, there was an increase in revenue. The tax rate did increase by 2.4% from, you know, from 7.9 to 8.1 mils. Expenditures increased by 1.4 million from the previous year in basically an area of public safety, police, that had the largest increase from year to year. The general fund did make a transfer up to the capital projects fund of $416,000. And they did receive a transfer in from the SOAR fund of $600,000, which is consistent with the previous years. And I want to point out that this year, the budget that was passed by the board was a balanced budget, but the general fund actually had an increase this year of $2.2 million from the previous year. So it came in better than your budget. Your SOAR fund, this shows the last three years, and just, you know, from year to year, consistency across the board in terms of both revenues and expenses. From 2017 to 2018, there's about 1% change either way in your revenues and expenses, so pretty much flat. I want to point out the funded status of your pensions. As of year end, as of 12/31/18, the township's police pension plan was 67% funded versus 72% funded in the previous year. And the non-uniformed plan was 71% funded versus 78% funded in the year before. And I think a lot of that had to do with how the market performed with your investments. You know, the township is putting funds into trust each year to help pay this liability, so that had a lot to do with it.
That was the last quarter, and I'm sure it bounced back.
Yeah. Everybody got killed the last quarter of 2018, right? Just that fortunately, that's when this was cut off. And the township is current on all the required payments, the MMO, in each year. One new change this year is that there's a new accounting pronouncement that the township had to implement into their statements. It's like GASB-75. GASB stands for Government Accounting Standards Board. It basically sets, you know, gap for townships. In the past, the net OPEB liability, and these are the benefits for retirees other than, you know, pensions, so anything you pay to a retiree other than pension plans is considered other post-employment benefits. This year, the full value of that liability is now going to be reflected in the township's financial statements. In the past, it was kind of being gradually brought on books over time, but the whole full amount was always disclosed in the notes to the report. This year, the full liability is on the books. And as of 12/31/18, actually, the ultimate value of that liability was $47.3 billion, $1 million. Okay. So that's different. Other things to point out, this year, we said one minor, an expected audit adjustment that we gave Amy and then she posted. Other than that, you know, we didn't have anything else that we needed to adjust. She, you know, her books weren't in order. Everything that we asked for as part of the audit process was provided to us on a timely manner. So from that standpoint, the audit process did go very smooth. And we did review the audit results with management prior to this meeting, so they, you know, nothing I'm saying here is a surprise. Other than that, it's a high-level review. I think.
I assume there weren't any management comments?
No.
Nothing?
No, we try, but she says.
That's it.
We try.
Testament.
Yeah.
Our finance director. Absolutely. That's good news. Thank you. Board, have any questions?
Is the $47 million liability, is that online with other townships or municipalities our size, or? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, it's a little bit larger, but it's not by a lot. You know, you're no different. Right now, your township does not have a trust set up to fund that liability, and that's consistent with what I see across the board at other townships. Not a lot of refunding it.
I think, Commissioner, just due to the size and age of our community, I think it's probably pretty in line with other older communities who've had uniformed police forces, and that's what this represents, the medical that's paid to our retired police officers afterward. So I think we're probably on par with other communities of our size and age.
And we're all, we all live longer, too.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Steven. Well, try your last.
That's fine.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for the good report. Next is a presentation by Tim Denny, our Assistant Township Manager and Director of
Good evening, Commissioners. Amy, of course. Yes. I wanted to take just a couple of minutes tonight to give you an update on the Capitol Parks Improvement Plan. I had talked with you a few months ago and said we were ready to get rolling. I applaud you for the initiative. It is a big project, the scope of which the township have never seen before. It's the biggest ever in township history. It's also a combination of variety because it's township-wide, as well as being very individual. It's dealing a lot with infrastructure, but there's other areas, too. Some of the things that we're looking at are items that have been 40, 50, sometimes longer since they've been addressed. And so we're trying to look at all of that, but also say, okay, what's it going to look like in 20, 30 years, some of these things? Because that's the scope of what we're talking about. And I also had mentioned that, to the degree that we can, we're trying to keep in mind the weather, the users, the coordination with when the work can be done, working with our own department, plus Public Works and storage if we start ordering equipment. So there's a lot of things to consider, and I just thought it might be helpful to give you an update of where we are. I'll just run through some of the projects with you without going into a whole lot of detail, starting with Veterans Field right out back here, because this field was the most impacted by this building and Sacred Heart School and Brookline. Baseball were displaced to a degree over the last couple of years, so we thought it was only fair to kind of begin with them. And we've had a number of meetings with Pinone and Associates and the user groups, starting in December, and then we met again last Friday. Commissioner McGarvey was there. And our goal was to at least initially get the football field back so that can be used. And without going into a whole lot of detail, we're basically moving it a little bit to the left so that it fits back in, and then we're going to deal with some of the baseball fields and how we address those and some of the other areas moving forward. But number one was to get them their football field back in the hopes that they could at least practice there this upcoming fall. So that's a big thing. The other thing related to Veterans Field I wanted to bring to the Commissioners' attention was we had a gentleman come to the park board meeting at the invitation of Michelle Alvera, who is on the park board. And a gentleman, apparently, I think Kevin may have come to your Commissioner meeting, constituent meeting, I believe, and talked about the veteran signs that are on the streets out here. And he very much appreciated them. He himself was a veteran. But he said the challenge was, as you probably heard, they're up so high. So he asked if we could do something here at Veterans Park. And the park board felt, and we all felt, it makes good sense. So we are going to, once we get the other work done, try and figure out how we can make this park live up to its name a little bit more in terms of when people come, and how we do that has not been determined. But I think it's a good thing and a right thing. Did you want to say something? I'm sorry. So that's where we are on Veterans Field. Something that will be on the agenda for next Monday, hopefully, is awarding a contract to fix up some of our tennis courts. We will open the bids tomorrow, and assuming everything is as it should be, the goal is to get that process going. Again, some of these projects are much more, you have to look at a little bit because you have to bid them, and then you get them, and the weather, and also you're really looking four, or five, six months out. But our goal was to get some of the tennis courts, like at Westgate and Paddock, Cooper Town, some of them in good shape. And as I suggested to the board before, it's my opinion that we have more tennis courts than we need. So let's get a certain number, which this will bring 14 in the township in good shape, evenly divided around the township. And then I'm suggesting that we find some other purpose for some of those other surfaces. What that is is not yet determined, but I don't think we need to redo all 26 tennis courts. I just don't think it's the best use of our money, and again, looking down the road. But hopefully, that'll be on Monday's agenda. I just wanted to bring that to the Commissioners' attention. Down at Carricon, our Pinone Engineers has designed the parking. They've asked us for a while, could we officially figure out how to do the parking in the upper lot there? So that's a good thing. We've met with the dog park people, friends at the dog park. Again, Pinone Engineers, some of the volunteers have met with them to try to come up with some kind of solutions. You've got a very steep grade there, so nothing's going to be a permanent fix, but we are working forward on that. Some of our walkways.
Can I backtrack?
Yes.
Are there any thoughts, any ideas on what?
Yeah, some of them involve, some of the things, I'm sorry, yeah, some of them involve perhaps putting down some carpeting. That could be quite expensive. Pop, perhaps, we can do a little bit of regrading, but again, then you're going to make your dog park smaller because you had a slope like this. The primary thing, as Dave can point out, is you've got a very steep slope there. But we're looking at, we had already put down some trees, working with Doc, and put some telephone poles across there to try and mitigate it to a degree, so maybe some more of that. Our gut feeling is that in the end, it'll be a combination of things. We're never going to totally solve it, but hopefully, between a combination of things and trying this and trying that, we can slow it down. And that's the goal. You know, you've got such a steep slope, it just happens.
So they know that we're making an effort, at least.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And some of the friends at the dog park, volunteers were at the meeting, so everybody's aware that we're working on it.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions on? Next thing it has, the walkways. Again, isn't that exciting? But a lot of our parks, I'll use Richland Farms as an example, the sidewalks around our parks are not in good condition. And we hold our residents to a certain standard of keeping their sidewalks in good condition, and this is dramatically overdue. You know, we need to catch up, so we're going to work and get that out to the street on bid as soon as we can. Hopefully, our goal is maybe we can get that done by June, get it out there. Secondary to that is the pathways that go through the park, which are sort of a different thing, and that'll be ongoing. We're going to work on that. We'll give it an initial shot, and we'll probably come back to it two or three times over the next few years, because ADA is going to come into play at some point, because when you redo a park or redo a significant area of your park, you've got to make it ADA accessible. So we'll be talking about pathways more than once, and I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Some of the other things we've been doing on some of our parks that have been perhaps not gotten the attention as much as others, we're really trying to meet with the neighbors, the civic groups, where there is a need to invest some serious capital. One of those is Richland Farms, and the park board feels, and I certainly agree with them, because that's such a high-profile park for our township, that we want to really make that look nice. And so we've been talking with the civic association and meeting, and our hope is to really give that a real makeover down at Richland Farms there, and it needs it. Another one of those is Lanark Park, which has been not gotten much work, and because of the school being sold and the apartments being developed there, it's kind of been a unique situation, so we have to kind of rethink that to a degree. Chatham Glen is on the list of areas where we've said to the Commissioner, would you like us to reach out to the civic associations? So we have a number of those kind of projects going, too, where it's fairly significant work within that park. And then we have some others. Trash cans, you're probably tired of hearing me talk about trash cans, but again, I think it's an important thing aesthetically, and research shows that types of trash cans you have, where you place your trash cans influences how much your trash cans get used. And so instead of our guys needing to go around and pick up the trash before they can cut the grass, you know, that's our goal. So it actually is, and we're going to either start off by ordering 20 or 40 of those. You may see it on the agenda, or if it comes in lower, then we might not need to put it on the agenda. And the reason I'm holding up on that is to see how much room Public Works has to store them. We don't want to overwhelm our own systems. But we're going to move on that. And then some of the smaller pieces, I said to Jason, in some of the parks, almost all of the parks to some degree, there are some small pieces that we feel like we can just pull them out and replace them, because they're outdated, not up to code, or just don't look good. They're not the big pieces where we'll involve the neighbors, who's just, you know, the rockers, maybe the swing set at Grassland, those kind of things, small pieces. And there at Chatham Glen, Grassland, Carroll Park, S-Track, Lanark, pretty much throughout the township, really, Foster Track, Lawrence Alley, Hillside, Westgate, Richland, there's quite a few of them all throughout the township. Again, these are just the smaller pieces. We have the surfaces that I mentioned before, at Guest Track, at Bailey, at Grange, at Hilltop, at Paddock, just unused surfaces. And I do think they warrant conversation, perhaps with your civic groups, those who choose and will be reaching out to you, and those of you who have parks in those areas, would you like us to make a decision to move forward, or did you want to involve your constituents to some degree, or some balance in between? Bens, I talked about them. Basketball courts, I was out with Brian, I'm going to hand that off to Brian, something to assess our basketball courts around town. A lot of them need work. And then some of the areas where we're doing work that's not necessarily related to this, but we did some plantings up at Polo, as you know. We just, this weekend, had a lot of work done at the Westgate Trail. So there's a lot of other things going on that are not specifically related to this plan, this project. But I just wanted to kind of let you know that's where it is, and you'll be hearing from us more and more. And I suggested that we get up each month and just kind of give you an update, because this is really a big initiative. Again, I congratulate the board, but also think it's important to realize that it's a scope, it's like your house, if it had not been worked on in 50 years. Some of these things are just infrastructure things that need a lot of work. So that's my presentation. Any questions?
Where's all the work going to come from, Tim? Do you get, are you getting some extra help on this?
Well, most of these things that I've mentioned, like veterans here will be, you know, professionals will be contracting the bids on the tennis courts. A lot of it is bid work, the smaller pieces that I mentioned, Jason's crew can handle them. So it'll be sort of a mix, you know, depending on the project and the scope of the project. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Next is Commissioner Committee Updates. May 5th through the 11th is Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. And it's important that we recognize this. Normally, we would do proclamations next week, but that would be after the fact. So I would ask Dr. Hart to present this proclamation.
Whereas, good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Awareness Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas, one in five children experience or will experience a mental health disorder. And whereas, research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health disorders among children and adolescents provide them better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas, children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to timely services and supports that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate, they also benefit from the integration of behavioral health in primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas, it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn about the warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas, obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, school, and others involved with the child. Now therefore, be proclaimed that the Township of Havreford, Board of Commissioners, does hereby proclaim, May 5th to 11th, 2019, Child's Mental Health Awareness Week. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2019, Township of Havreford, Andy Lewis, President, Larry Holmes, Vice President. Just a shout-out to the Child Guidance and Music Works, which are two Havreford organizations that provide mental health to children, and also to the Trent Stettler Memorial Fund that has been funding some talks recently on childhood and adolescent mental health. Resources are out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Are there any other Commissioner Committee Updates? If not, we'll ask the Chief of Police, John Viola, for the Police Department Crime Update. You going to tell us there are no car break-ins this month? Wish you could, but I.
I'll just say that they're down this month.
Yeah, they're down this month.
I'll give you good news, which you know about already. So for the month of April, the Police Department's crime report, we had 25 criminal arrests, seven juvenile arrests, 308 traffic citations, and I think most of them were on Farwood Road. So 29 traffic citations, 299 written warnings, 75 handwritten parking tickets, and 294 automated parking tickets. On 4/28, we had two armed holdups, back-to-back, at eight minutes after midnight and then 21 minutes after midnight. The first one was a 400 at Township Line Road, which is a Sunoco station. A black male entered and displayed a firearm. Then, from there, he went up to the 711 on Havreford Road and did the same thing there. Through good work of our detectives through the night and through the weekend, we're able to identify the suspect with the help of surrounding police departments, and arrest warrant has been obtained for the suspect. The Katz Pharmacy holdup or burglary was solved. I think I told you that last one. Eighty jobs were cleared on that, and that was through the help of Philadelphia and the FBI. The town tap and arrest warrant was issued, and the subject was taken into custody, and eight jobs were cleared with that. That's Philadelphia. So as far as cars entered, vehicles entered, we had 14 thefts, we're down considerably by half for last month, so maybe somebody is listening to us and locking their cars. But I'm sad to say, neighbors from my neighborhood forgot to lock their cars because they were up and down my street. Luckily, a very alert neighbor saw somebody wandering around the backyards at 5:30 in the morning, called. They took, both subjects took off. Our officers were in the neighborhood and was immediately arrested one person a block away, and the second person right down here to the police station driveway. Of course, they're not talking, but we found a lot of change in stuff in the backpacks of the two suspects. Also, another one on Davis Road, we had officers down to deploy in plain clothes and plain cars. Officer Kenny made an outstanding arrest down there, does my good work. He saw suspicious activity, and they locked the two people there also. So like I always state before, we'll lock up, too. Three days later, they're out again, it just continues and continues. But as long as people keep their cars locked, these will get out considerably. We have three bicycle thefts, and K-9 usages are up. We had nine K-9 usages, and I think I've reported this before, we changed the times the K-9 officers are working, they're working now around the clock with each platoon, so they're out there 24 hours a day. We're making a lot of good work with the K-9s on drug sniffs in the parks and also on vehicle stops for us and for surrounding police departments. That's my report.
I didn't want, I didn't mean to make light of the dog, I mean, the car break-in problem, because I had, I had two in my ward that they didn't report to the police because they were actually embarrassed to, had locked their car. So I think there's probably more of it than we even know about, but I think the point is, you know, we keep emphasizing is to, it's obvious, but you got to lock your car at all times, even if it's in your garage.
It's very important, and just, you know, people leave so many valuable things in cars, it's, and, you know, like I reported before, there was a weapon taken, and that weapon will probably service at some time in another crime. So there are things that just, it's very important to lock the car. But, and you're right, a lot of people don't report them because they are embarrassed. So these numbers, well, we have reported us, besides the ones that aren't reported because nothing's taken. But our officers find cars, cars open in the middle of the night, they'll see car doors open, see garage doors open, we're knocking on doors at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning to make sure everything's okay with the car in the house, so.
Chief Havreford. I have the ring doorbell.
Yes.
And so a lot of people, a lot of people are getting that, and that's helped identify, you know, it's amazing, because neighbors send it to other neighbors, and you'll see a suspect trying their car door.
Yes.
Does that help? Do you?
It does some. We do get a lot of video like that. I have them myself, and they're very, very helpful. A lot of times, you know, you have to know who the person is to identify them, but sometimes we make an arrest, we do have video showing that person in a certain neighborhood, or it alerts the homeowner that somebody's in their driveway or around their house, and it wakes them up, and we do share the video, yes.
And just to be clear, this is not unique to Havre.
No, absolutely not.
This is happening everywhere.
It's all over the country, Commissioner. It's, I call it an epidemic. I mean, where it, how it started, I don't know, but I guess it's just called on, they realize that people just don't lock their car doors. The two that we locked up, their statement was, we heard that people out in this county don't lock their doors, and that's where we're coming out here. So that's the word we get back from some of these suspects.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Looking at next week's agenda, first item will be a swearing-in of our new Township Manager and Secretary, David R. Berman. We're excited to welcome him, and at the same time, we're going to miss Amy as our Acting Township Manager, who did such a great job in the interim from Larry's departure, the one David will take the reins next week. So we're excited to have him being sworn in by Justice District Magistrate Robert Burke. And I understand David's in the audience, and I understand your wife will be here, as well as at least one of your children, if not two, so we're excited. So look forward to that next week. Under consideration next week are five ordinances, the first of which is ordinance number P-2-2019 Havreford Reserve Bill of Sale, first reading. This is the accepting of dedication of the sanitary sewer improvements, along with a utility and access easement agreement per our June 9th, 2008 agreement with Havreford Reserve LP. So this is for the Carriage House portion of the development only. So this is for the carriage house portion of the development only. Does any member of the board have any questions or discussion on this particular proposed Next ordinance is number P-7, 2019 Pedaling Solicitation, first reading. We already had as a board a pretty extensive discussion at our April 1st work session. Thanks to Commissioner Siegel and John Viola, our Chief of Police, they've made some suggested revisions. I think the substantive changes are, they've, I think, added a preamble, and the application procedure and license issuance will go through the Police Department rather than through the Codes Enforcement Department. And the third one is the restriction on issuance to anyone involved in a crime, as defined in Section 135(c), 5(c) of that proposed ordinance. I think they're the substantive changes that they've adjusted on. Whether Commissioner Siegel would like to add anything to that, or is there any additional questions or discussion on this particular ordinance?
Let me just clarify, but your summary is accurate. We've had discussions with Council's office because we had some complaints about the prior ordinance. Therefore, we added a preamble to explain why we are making these amendments, in particular because of citizen complaints, and also to clarify that we are not trying to, you know, infringe on constitutional rights of organizations who would be exempt from this, or political organizations, or those types of individuals. And then the only other substantive change was the provision as to what are the criteria for issuing licenses. We tried to make it stronger in consultation with the Chief and Deputy Chief. And in the prior ordinance, we actually, it was inconsistent as to whether it was the Township Manager or the police. And so we went through and simply made all of the issuance through the police.
Thank you for your efforts there, Commissioner Siegel. Any other comments or questions?
I just have a question on the conviction part. Is it three years from when someone is convicted, three years when they complete probation?
It's three years from the later of the date of the conviction termination probation, which could be later than that, or release from incarceration. So it's whatever is later of three years. And that's pretty consistent. That's lower Merian standard. It's pretty generally consistent that the standard is from the latest of those dates, whether it gets into evidentiary issues, it's always from the latest of dates, et cetera. So it's consistent there.
And one other question, and there's also an exemption from individuals running for public office going to doors with no soliciting signs.
That's, you cannot prohibit soliciting by political candidates, by charitable organizations, by religious organizations. They're protected under the First Amendment. So one of the things that would be helpful, and was actually suggested by Mr. Byrne's office, by Kelly Hayes, is that on the township website, we would specify that and remind residents that although there are restrictions on commercial solicitation, which are more rigid, the others, we cannot prohibit, where we would be subject to, you know, legal claims against us.
But knock on that door at your own peril.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know if you're running for office, if you want to knock on a door that doesn't want you, but, you know, we can't ban stupidity.
Any other questions or comments, discussion?
The only other question I had was, you know, I understand the logic and the thought behind switching it from the Codes Department to the police station. I mean, is that something you're going to have the bandwidth or capacity? On here, there's a daily requirement. You sign in every day.
Our civilian staff will handle it at the window. It'll be extra work. We'll be able to manage it, I'm sure. I'm not sure, Joe, how many of you got in on a daily basis when you were doing them up here? We should be okay. We won't know until we get them, but from what Joe just said, it's not overwhelming.
Thank you. Next ordinance under consideration is P-10, 2019 Traffic Reading. This is related to the removal of traffic restrictions because of the Beechwood Bridge closing. This is second reading. Any additional comments, questions on this? That finishes up our ordinances of... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Back up to ordinance P-9, 2019 Amending Chapter 30 Pensions Employee Benefits, second reading. This was explained at length by our Finance Director at last month's meeting. This is a benefit that will be extended to employees that has no cost to the taxpayer. So it's a kind of a win-win situation. Is that a fair summary? Does anybody have any questions or comments, discussion on that ordinance? Okay, now we turn, we have five resolutions under consideration next week. The first is a SolSmart designation, and this is a designation that...
Mr. President, the curbs ordinance is also for a second reading, and we did make the, there were some minor changes to clarify. Those have been made with Mr. Celia's consent, and they reflect exactly the amendments that were proposed by the board.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. So that's P-8, 2019 Curb, second reading. So anybody have any discussion on that? I think we beat that to death pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then under resolutions, Resolution 2134, 2019 SolSmart Designation. This is something that we're seeking, was recommended by our Environment Advisory Committee, a designation that we'll seek from the International Council of City Managers and the Solar Foundation. This is just to reduce solar barriers and to make Haverford Township more open to solar. So we'll be presenting that resolution. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? Okay, second resolution is number 2135, 2019 Greenways Trail and Recreation Program Grant Application in the amount of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the acquisition of 224 Foster Avenue and the redevelopment of that property into a community dog park. I understand this is a 15% matching grant. This is in the 8th Ward. And does anyone have any comments or...
We're going to be changing the last line of that to redevelopment of the property into a community park. Leave that to look.
Into a community park. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hart. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Next resolution under consideration, which is exciting, we're applying for a grant from the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant Application in the amount of $213,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for modification to an unnamed tributaries at Darby Creek to accommodate the future extension of the Darby Creek Trail. So this is a, basically a widening of the culvert. You'll recall that we had trouble with one of the, getting easement through one of the properties. And this, the long-range plan is, and this is just another piece of the puzzle, to connect the Darby Creek Trail from Murray Place all the way to Haverford Reserve. This is an important, really important piece of that puzzle, since we weren't able to get an easement. We're going to work around that issue. So, Tim, I don't know, Tim, you could comment maybe on what other pieces of the puzzle are missing that we have to fill. What's that? Yeah, if you don't mind, come on up.
So, as Andy said, we're trying to get from Murray Place up to the Reserve. There is kind of three key pinch points in that part. We're actually also trying to go south to Upper Darby, but for this purposes here, we have, we come up to Westchester Pike, there's Barnabes, and the Car Wash. And we've gotten agreements by them in principle that we can use their property, and they'll hold harmless agreements. And you go under Westchester Pike, and the apartments are there. They have also agreed to allow us to come on their property. Then we have four homeowners, and they have not agreed. So that's a major consideration right there. It's how to get around there. And my hope is that once we sell 599, that's why I keep nudging Dave a little bit, once we sell 599, we can use that money. And not only can we use that money, but DCNR has agreed, it's very unusual, they allow you to sell something that you have purchased with a state grant. So that building at 599, we purchased that 20 years ago with a state grant. But DCNR has said that the township can sell that as long as we use that money to work on the trail or Murray Place or something right in that area. So our hope is, once we have that money in hand, we can go back to those homeowners and offer them money, actually, for the easement. That's our hope. And then this part that you just described, Andy, as you go along, for those of you who have gone on any of my walks over the years, come along, and there, you've got Darby Creek Road up here, which is treacherous road to try and walk along. So down here is this tributary, and in the past, we've had to come up on the Darby Creek Road and go back down. And this would allow us to cross over, and I'm leaving it up to our engineers to decide what's the best way to do that. But that, it's the easiest part of the puzzle, and my theory all along has been try to do what you can, where you can, when you can. And by doing this, when we can, we'll be in better shape for when we can get around doing the other pieces. So it's a, we think it's a very doable piece of the process.
So the last remaining piece will be to negotiate some kind of easement agreement with those.
That's correct.
You think it's just a monetary thing, or you think they're just...
It's a combination. We almost had a couple of them, you know? It was this close. And then one guy went and got married.
Then it was no.
And the part that was really the hardest part, and, you know, everybody certainly has a right to their own thoughts, so not trying to say anything. But they had just moved in. And I think the fear of just moving in, not being sure, like, what am I agreeing to? So I do think that in time, they'll realize...
It's a good asset.
The fishermen are back there. It really doesn't impact them at all, you know? So that's my hope, that combination of time and perhaps a little money, you know, that we can make it work. So that's what this is, though, is that culvert, which is, we think is very doable.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate the update. Any other questions on that particular resolution? The next resolution is 2137-2019 Flood Mitigation Program Grant Application in the amount of $500,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for construction underground retention facility within Chatham Glen Park. This is an area of the township that has been plagued with, you know, pretty significant stormwater management problems. We made a good investment, I think recently, in underwater basin, is that right, Amy? And this would be just, you know, further mitigation efforts in that area, not a cure-all or solve the complete problem, but certainly, you know, another piece to try to help mitigate the stormwater management problems in that area. It would be a 15% match, matching grant. So anybody have any questions on that resolution?
Andy, I just want to mention on this, what you're talking about down there at the Chatham Glen Park, they worked on that for quite some time, and it was a total mess down there. And I did happen to notice that there's one really big chunk of curb that's been bussed all over the place down there. So anyway, I think maybe we should look into, did the contractor do that? It wasn't there before, I can tell you that.
Look at that. Thank you, Commissioner McGarry. Any other discussion, comments?
Commissioner, I'm sorry. When you asked about Commissioner Committee Updates, I should have gave an update that the Police Comprehensive Plan Committee, Steering Committee met last week, and we went over the proposals. And we picked the three best, we think the three best are, correct?
You want to...
Yeah, we narrowed it down to a top three based on a number of different scoring items. And we plan on, you know, getting together some interviews for those top three, and hopefully, we should have a top number one really shortly for everybody.
I'm going to bring it to this board for approval.
Thank you. And the final resolution is Resolution 2138, 2019 Final Land Development Plan for Republic Any questions, discussion on this proposed resolution?
Just so people understand, this was the, that we had the preliminary agreement for last month, and that there was a few other revisions in terms of streetscape and design features that went before the planning committee, and recommendations were made by the planning committee, or the Planning Commission, which the applicant complied with to a large extent. There are people here, if anybody has questions about the design or streetscape, they can talk to them.
Thank you. The next item will be Finance Department approved, the Tax Assessment Appeal for DC Folio 22-3-0082842-00, also known as 4-6 East Eagle Road. This is a proposed settlement, a tax assessment appeal case involving a nonprofit, where we have the school district, the county, and the Township Board agreed. The initial request, the, was for 100% complete tax reduction, or elimination of taxes, of all taxes, and there was a settlement proposed at 50%. And that's a settlement that we'll be considering next week. The total cost of the township would be, on an annual basis, would be $750. So it's relatively, it's obviously a small impact, but it's Kelly music for life on Eagle Road. So the lower portion of it will be taxed at 50%, and the top portion, I mean, yeah, the top portion would be taxed fully, right? Residential, or just looking at it as a whole?
We have 50% reduction representing the second floor, which will be residential, so that will be taxed just like everybody else, and the first floor would be exempt.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions on that agenda item? Okay. And then we have three proclamations. Police Week, which I'm sure the chief will do. We also have Officer of the Year. And then finally, we might get a chance to present the Race for Peace Recognition Award to Deputy Chief Joe Hagan. We've tried three times, but thanks to this, it still worked this, it'll work next week. So, want to add, Tim had mentioned that we also want to add to the agenda next week, there's a bid award for the tennis court restoration program. So if the board's okay, we'd add that for consideration. The bid opening is tomorrow, right?
Correct.
So we'd add that, if that's all right with the board? Any objection?
As long as we meet the advertising requirements, I guess.
Yeah, we met the, we have. Okay. So we'll add that to the agenda as well. I think that concludes. I just want to thank Amy for, again, for her stewardship on this period. She did an outstanding job, and she had three hats to wear, and so I'm sure she'll be anxious to, and she was taking calls on the weekend and returning emails, so maybe you won't have to go through that, and that'll be David going through that, so.
Andy, can I just mention that next week, we're going to discuss these housing problems that we're having throughout the township?
About next month. Next month, property maintenance, yeah.
Month?
Next month, it'll be a whole discussion on property maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other commissioner have any thing to bring before the board? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.